I'd like to call the order in Tuesday, May 4th, 2021, regular meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Summerville, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please be upstanding.
The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Welker?
Here.
Commissioner McCafferty is absent. Commissioner Somerville?
Here.
Commissioner Schweitzer?
Here.
Commissioner Metters?
Here.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Here.
Chair Merritt?
Here, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll move forward to item 4A, consideration and possible action to approve the April 6th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to study those out? It was a long meeting.
I make a motion, accept this printed?
I'll second.
Have a motion and seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Anybody against that? Approved unanimously. Moving to item 5, staff reports.
There are no staff reports for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move forward with item 6, public hearing portion of our minutes. Item 6A, consideration and possible recommendation of town council to rezone approximately five acres of real property located 650 feet east of the intersection of South Road 1 East and Easy Street from AR-5, agricultural residential five acre minimum zoning district to SR 1.6, single-family residential 1.6 acre minimum zoning district, in order to further subdivide the property. Will?
Alrighty. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commission. The item before you as read is a request to rezone a piece of property here in Chino Valley in order to further subdivide it. The applicant is in attendance this evening. The subject property is approximately 650 feet east of the intersection of Easy Street and South Road 1 East. It is approximately five acres in size, and is currently used as a single-family residence. To the northeast, you have the Chino Meadows subdivision, Vista Grande Estate subdivision. Southeast, Karen Acres subdivision. Southwest, Chino Valley Town Center subdivision. And then to the west, you have the Chino Valley High School. The general plan, planned use designation for this property is medium-density residential, two acres or less, as well as the surrounding areas immediately to the north, south, east, and west. The request of 1.6 acre minimum is in conformance with the town's general plan. The property is predominantly surrounded by AR-5, however, there are several single-family residential zoning districts within the adjacent area. You have the Chino Meadows SR 0.16 zoning district to the northeast. To the south, you have SR1, as well as SR2, SR2.5 to the east. And then directly north, you have a rezoning that went through and is approved in April 27th. It's currently in its review or 30-day post-period after approval, in which it will be enacted 30 days following approval. The request of the SR 1.6 zoning district is consistent with the general area, or generally area, properties and their zoning. Neighborhood meeting was held on April 28th, 2021. All properties were noticed within a 300-foot radius of the subject property. One surrounding property owner was in attendance, and they asked how many lots that the applicant was proposing? The applicant is proposing three lots. And then, were there any roadway improvements required? And there are, which I'll get into in this following slide here. In regards to what is required or stipulated for this rezoning, a 40-foot dedication along Easy Street is required. That is for the Road 1 East right-of-way. Easy Street is required to be surfaced or improved with a double chip in accordance with UDO Section 5.3.2, Table 5-2. Town code requires improvements along South Road 1 East with a half-width street improvement of 14 and a half feet minimum. And then, legal access along Easy Street will need to be made to accommodate new owners of the created parcel. Currently, Easy Street is a private roadway that services two parcels. In order for the new subdivided parcels to have legal access, they will need to be accounted either in the deed or a different recording of Easy Street to allow each property owner legal rights across property bounds. With that being said, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the town council to rezone approximately five acres of real property from AR-5 agricultural residential five acre minimum zoning district to SR 1.6, single-family residential 1.6 acre minimum zoning district, in order to further subdivide the property with the following stipulations. One, dedication of right-of-way be made on Road 1 East. Two, roadway surface improvements be made on Easy Street. Three, roadway improvements be made to South Road 1 East. And four, legal access on Easy Street to accommodate new owners. And we'll open it up to questions or discussion from the commission.
Okay, does anybody on the commission have questions for this gentleman? Alright, Will, thank you.
No problem.
Would the owner like to come up and speak, please? You're not required to speak, just asking if you would like to. You'll step up and just state your name in the microphone and speak into the microphone, or they yell at us from the back room if you don't do that.
Good evening. My name is Lorna Di Bastiani.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you, everybody? Good.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about your project?
Well, I have, I have five acres, and I wanna change that. I want to sell 1.6 acres, then another 1.6 acres, so that would make three acres. Then I would have the rest of it for myself, with my home on it. That's it.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody on the commission have any questions for the owner? Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So we're gonna open up the public portion of this meeting for this particular item. Is there anybody out in the audience there that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Would you please step up to the podium and state your name?
Yeah, my name is Jim Benetti. I live in town here off of 3 Roads South. You got a map of this area that you guys wanna develop?
Can we bring up the zoning map, please? Or the, actually, the site map, probably?
Okay, where's Easy Street? Okay, does it go up here, too?
No, this is one south.
One south, okay, alright.
Oh, sorry, one east, south one.
Okay, so that's the area you wanna develop, AR-5 or something?
Uh, correct. This is what it should be.
Yeah, okay.
What does the new zoning do? Is it residential?
Correct, yes, the request is for an SR, single-family residential.
Okay, alright. Oh, good. More power to him, then. The other piece of property that the lady over here was wanting to, oh, change?
I'm, in regards to this specific project?
Uh, I think it was her own. Was she gonna put houses on there?
We'll, we'll have to just visit about what's on the, on the agenda for tonight.
Oh, I thought that, I'm sorry, I thought that was on the agenda.
If you have questions like that, if you would like to visit the town staff, they'll be happy to try to answer all the questions that you have.
Yeah. Where do you get ahold of them at?
If you go up to the town hall, which is up here where the fire station is at.
Okay.
They're right just before the fire station. Are you familiar with that area?
No.
Where the park is at and all of that?
I'm, I'm new in town. I've been here not quite a year.
If you go up 89-
If you'd like to meet with staff, they can get you an address.
If you go up 89 to the McDonald's, turn left, go down half a mile, you'll see the town center on the left-hand side. We open up at 7:00 in the morning.
Okay, I've been up there at your permit department.
That's exactly where you need to go.
Same building.
Alright, thanks. You're welcome.
And excuse me, sir. Sir?
Sir?
Sir. Can I have your last name again, please? Benetti?
Benetti, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Seeing nobody else, I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting. Is there any questions or discussion from the commission? I would like to entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion. Recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the town council to rezone approximately five acres of real property from AR-5 agricultural residential five acre minimum to zoning district SR 1.6, single-family resident, residential, 1.6 acre minimum, in order to further subdivide the property with the stipulations as presented in the staff report.
Okay, do we need to read each one of those stipulations, or is the staff report sufficient?
You can, you can say that, you can read that motion and then just say, with the stipulations as included in the staff report. But you do have to mention the stipulations and where they're reflected.
Okay.
That's why I mentioned.
Yep. So, Gary, just to be very clear on your motion, that we do the staff recommendations that are listed in the item here on the, from the town staff for this particular item 6A.
Correct.
As written. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions? All in, this'll be a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Welker?
Yay.
Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Schweitzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Aye.
Chair Merritt?
Aye. This motion is passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so we will move forward to item 6B, consideration and possible recommendation to town council to approve the Park View at Bright Star Preliminary Platt located along Meridian Parkway East, Meridian Parkway North, and Galileo Court to subdivide approximately 3.72 acres of real property into 31 lots developed over a single phase. Will?
Good evening again, commission. The item before you is a requested preliminary plat for the Park View at Bright Star subdivision. This is a conceptual level document for the preliminary plat. This site already has entitlements, and this is not a discussion about the entitlements. This is simply to ensure that the preliminary plat meets all aspects of the UDO for recommendation and procedure in the subdivision process. Subject property itself is contained within the Bright Star subdivision at the east end of town. Cross streets are roughly Meridian Parkway East, Meridian Parkway North, and then Galileo Court that kinda snakes around through here. To the east, you have the Century Ranch subdivision that has yet to be developed, the Antelope Ridge subdivision, Chino Meadows subdivision to the west, along with the Highlands Ranch, Colonial Villas, and Country West Mobile Home Park. The two subject properties total approximately 3.71 acres and is currently vacant. They can be directly accessed through the access roads of Meridian Parkway and Galileo. The properties are zoned multifamily commercial with a planned area development. In this case, the entitlements for this, these parcels are defined strictly through the preliminary, or sorry, the planned area development associated with the Bright Star subdivision. The planned area development for all of Bright Star was adopted in late 2000. The land use map denotes that these properties are residential tracts, and the master plan calls for the central area of the development to be single or cluster units. The proposed, the proposed development of the preliminary plat for Park View at Bright Star conforms with the adopted planned area development for the subdivision. The preliminary plat itself consists of 31 lots with an average lot size of 2,248 square feet, has a density of 8.3 acres, or units per acre, and has an open space of 1.65 acres, or approximately 43% of the site itself. The project, or the homes will be accessed through a proposed private drive one-way with sidewalk on one side. So they will come in off, on the northeastern portion, they'll come in off Meridian Parkway and exit on Galileo. They will have driveways on the inside accessing the individual homes, and then sidewalk accessing the homes over here. Along the southwestern portion of the development, they will have a one-way private road coming in from Galileo and exiting onto Meridian. Again, this will be private and have sidewalk on the northern side. Preliminary plat conformance, Park View at Bright Star preliminary plat meets all requirements set forth by Section 5.2.3 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Development will have access via Meridian Parkway and Galileo through private drives. Development will be hooking up to both town water and town sewer. And after the approval of the preliminary plat, the project will go through the technical review process, then come back through approval for the final plat. With that being said, staff is recommending that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation to town council to approve the Park View at Bright Star preliminary plat for parcels 306-21-006C as in Charlie, and 306-02-006A as in Alpha, to subdivide approximately 3.72 acres of real property into 31 lots with a density of 8.3 units per acre developed over a single phase. Then I'll open it up to questions or discussion from the commission.
Do we have any questions from the commission? Yes, ma'am.
Are these all three single-story houses, or are they going back trying to do two-story?
I will defer that question to the applicant. He'll be able to offer a little bit more on to that.
For clarification, we're not talking about entitlements tonight. They are-
Josh, your microphone is not on.
Maybe they turned mine off because I talk too loud. So, we're not talking entitlements tonight. We're talking about the lot layout. The zoning designates how high or how many stories they're allowed to have. So, they could have, based on their zoning, between three to five stories. I can guarantee they're not doing that, but the applicant can address that if he so chooses. But that's not really what we're here to talk about tonight. We're here to talk about the preliminary plat and to make sure that they have met all the checkboxes that are required for a preliminary plat.
So when he comes up, if you like, you may ask him. Any other questions from the commission, or Will? So, Will, this is significantly changed from the last time we looked at it.
Absolutely.
Looks like it addresses most of the issues that were brought up in the meeting. I think the developers made quite a change here.
Yeah, absolutely, and I know he would love to speak on that and the changes that he made and why and how, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would the owner like to come up and speak? Please come up, state your name.
Good, good evening or afternoon. The sun's shining. It looks more like afternoon. I'm Paul O'Slaunian, and I came before you guys, as you know, several months ago. And we, we had a recommendation from the, from the Planning and Zoning Commission to move forward, but we laterally made a decision. No one had told us that we needed to, but it just felt that after hearing the neighbors' concerns, that there was a few things that were, there were, there were some valid points, and we wanted to address them. So, we redid the plat, and we, we moved the, one of the biggest concerns that the neighbors had was the access to Meridian, people backing up onto Meridian. And I, after looking at the traffic flow and everything, I think that was a valid, very valid point. And so, we, we made that change immediately to move all the access where each, each parcel, if you think of it as like a left parcel and a right parcel, or east and west, I should say, would have just one access point. So, we are limiting, and we're putting a one-foot no-access easement around the whole property so that people can't put their own driveways. So we just kinda flipped it where we had access out to Meridian. We put the backyards to Meridian and put everything onto the private driveway inside. The roads will be, we're proposing that they're, the interior driveway would be one-way, and which would allow for even better traffic flow for the community that we're, that we're going to build. So that's probably the biggest change we had. We also eliminated the parcel that was the commercially-zoned parcel on the west side. We pulled that out of the application, so we took that off the table, and that was a concern that the neighbors had. We also previously had asked for basically a variance or a change from the setback requirements. That has now been eliminated, so we are, we are setback at least 20 feet minimum from Galileo, Meridian with, from the property line, not from the surface itself, but from the property line in. In many cases, we're 35 feet off of the pavement. And to address the single story, it's something that we have been working on. And, you know, if, if you think about it, the footprint wouldn't change. The only thing that a second story would give is more square footage. And the intention of this, of this project is to have, to keep the, to keep the houses affordable, the single-family attached houses affordable. So, the only thing, difference is, again, that we would give up by going single-story would be some square footage. And we talked it over tonight, and we're willing to make that commitment to, to stay at single-story. So, in addition, when, when we read to this plat, again, it was not required, the staff did not require it, but we met with several of the neighbors. So, one of them is here tonight. Randy Odom was, was one of them. And then we met with several, several other neighbors to address their concerns and to show them that we were hearing what they had to say. And we, we were met with, you know, overwhelmingly strong, I don't know what the word is, but acceptance or appreciation that we, that we had listened to their concerns, you know, realizing that everybody has private property rights and, but, you know, taking into consideration the neighbors' concerns is important. So, this is, this is where we are, and we're excited to move forward on this basis.
Thank you, sir. Anybody on the commission have questions?
I was just curious, are the yards gonna be fenced?
Yes, yes, the, the property will be fenced, uh-huh. The exterior of the, of the whole property and the backyards, which is fronting onto Meridian, absolutely.
And then the mail access is still along that alley on the south, the west side, I guess?
Yes, and we didn't disturb the, the alley access. I mean, previously, there, there might have been some concern there, but now, when we fence that, you know, nobody will be able to access the alley. And in fact, the circulation, we're, we're still debating on the circulation pattern here. You could flip those one-ways around, you know, and see which is best, so we're still, we're still toying with that. And I'll have to talk with Frank, see what he thinks about that, so. But that's a, that's a minor, you know, minor thing that we would do. Also, and this hasn't been addressed yet, but I would support and be really happy to see no parking on Meridian and Galileo. I don't think there should be any street parking for us or anyone else. I'm talking about other than in designated parking areas that have already been set aside. So I'm really thinking about along Meridian and the loop part of Galileo because I noticed there aren't any no-parking signs right now, and I don't think this, those roads were designed for that in mind. So, just something I would throw out there, some input.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll open up the public portion of this meeting for item 6B. Is there anybody out there that would like to step up and speak to this item? Please step up to the microphone and state your name. We're all generally pretty friendly up here.
It's Randy Odom, and I live in Bright Star, and I was one of the ones who met with Paul. And overall, our concerns, they were all addressed. So, from a community standpoint, I have not run into anyone that was still upset, worried about it, whatever, because the things that we had brought forward, they have been addressed by Paul. So, from our standpoint, we're looking good, and I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else out there that would like to speak? Alright, seeing no other volunteers, we're gonna close the public portion of the meeting for item 6B. Any questions from the commission? Anybody you'd like to re-interview? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
I recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation to the town council to approve the Park View at Bright Star Preliminary Platt for parcels to subdivide approximately 3.72 acres of real property into 31 lots with a density of 8.3 units per acre, developed under a single phase.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any other discussion? This'll be a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Welker?
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Schweitzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Aye.
Chair Merritt?
Yes. So the motion is carried unanimously. I would like to commend the developer for his interest in meeting with the community and working out all the issues because it was a little bit complicated there for a while. So, thank you. Alright, so we're gonna move forward to item 6C. Commissioner Meadows is going to recuse herself. That's big words for she's gonna leave the room while we talk about this. Okay, item 6C is consideration and possible recommendation to town council for approval of the Heritage Point Final Platt, Phase 2, 3, and 4, located approximately 1,700 feet west of the southwest corner of West Road 4 North and North Road 1 West to subdivide approximately 62 acres into 55 lots with an average lot size of 1.02 acres, developed over three separate phases. Will?
Alrighty, thank you. Once again, thank you for your consideration tonight to hear the final plat for Heritage Point, Phase 2, 3, and 4. The applicant is in attendance this evening for any questions that you may have at the following conclusion of this presentation. So as read, the subject property here is located off of North Road 4. To the east, you have Appaloosa Meadows. To the west, you have Chino Lake subdivision. Then up here at the north, you have Heritage Point, Phase 1, that was approved and then subsequently platted. Little project history for the Heritage Point subdivision. Back in September of 2019, town council approved the new preliminary plat with stipulations. Came back through the technical review process, and then came before council again in December of 2020 for approval of Phase 1 of their final plat. It was approved by council with stipulations, and it was subsequently addressed and then recorded. In March of 2021, a grading and civil improvement permit was issued for Phase 1, so they have begun all the dirt work, the street improvements, and then the utility work for the development. Just a little oversight of Phases 2, 3, and 4. Phase 2 consists of approximately 25 acres. They're proposing 20 lots within that Phase 2. Phase 3 here in blue has approximately 22 acres, and like Phase 2 has 20 acre, or 20 lots proposed. And then Phase 4 here is 15 acres and has 15 proposed lots. All these lots are one acre or greater, but they are consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved, as well as the entitlements for this piece of property. Heritage Point Final Platt meets all the requirements set forth in Section 5.2.4 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The site will have its main access by way of West Road 4 North, and development will be utilizing onsite wells and septic systems. Development Services Department and Public Works Department have completed a review of the submitted final plat and identified a couple of issues that needed to be addressed prior to the recordation of the final plat. These issues relayed to the developer and subsequently addressed to satisfaction of the department. These issues relayed, relayed to the developer and subsequently addressed, um, to satisfaction of the departments and no longer require stipulations for this item. In conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation to town council, uh, to approve the Heritage Point Final Platt Phases Two, Three, and Four to subdivide approximately sixty-two acres into fifty-five lots with an average lot size of one point zero two acres, developed over three separate phases with no stipulations. Now we'll open it up to questions or discussion from the commission.
You have any questions for Will? Getting off pretty easy.
I, I mean, I'm not knocking wood. Please don't, no, it's okay.
So, just to be clear, all of the requirements that the town has as far as engine, engineering, grading and, grading and drainage, any other type of site issues that may have been there, the town has remediated those with the developer and, and we're good to go.
Yep, from my understanding, that is correct. I can let the directors for each of those departments speak on that if you want, um, but yes, uh, they have completed and they're in line with town code.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, is the developer here, would he like to come up and speak?
Good evening, I'm Craig Helsing with Brown Homes. And, uh, just wanted to say that very grateful that been able to be a part of this project with the town, all the departments, planning and zoning, and council, and, uh, bringing this to the, the final stages of approval. I always, uh, find it, uh, very satisfying that we can provide a community that, uh, fits nicely, uh, as this one does in an infill, uh, setting. So, um, the only other thing I'd like to say, uh, is that we did have our, uh, soft opening on Friday. So we are open for sales and, uh, I don't know exactly what type of results we've had at this point, so I haven't, uh, got into that part of it yet, but we're, we're enthusiastic, we're excited, and we, uh, we love, uh, we love playing in the dirt, so. Anything you might have to ask is, anything I can.
Anybody have any questions? All right.
All right, thank you.
So we're going to open up the public portion of the meeting for item six C. Would anybody in the public like to step up and speak to this item? Yes, sir. Please step up to the podium and state your name.
Good evening, my name is Marty Hassett. I live at sixteen thirty-six Autumn Lane. My question is, is, uh, I called Will this afternoon and didn't get a return call back. I'm sure he's busy with the agenda tonight. I'd like to know what the town's definition is between light and heavy commercial, number one.
Um, we'll, we'll, we'll have to specifically speak to the item that's up here now.
That's six, that's on number D, correct?
That's six C, correct.
Mm-hmm, that's what I'm talking about.
There is no commercial designations on that property to the best of my knowledge.
So, the commercial, the rezoning from commercial light to commercial heavy is the next item? This item is a final plat approval for a residential subdivision.
Okay, thank you much.
Um, at the next item, if you wanna come up and ask, we can definitely define that.
I will do so. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna close the public portion of this meeting. Is there any questions or concerns from the commission? All right, I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to town council a recommendation of approval of the Heritage Point Final Platt Phases Two, Three, and Four to subdivide approximately sixty-two acres into fifty-five lots with an average lot size of one point zero two acres, developed over three separate phases with no stipulations.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Welker?
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Switzer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt.
Yes, so the item is passed unanimously. Would somebody please go get Commissioner Meadows back in here, we got work to do. All right. Thank you for coming back. We're going to move forward to item six D. Consideration of possible recommendations to town council to rezone approximately eleven point nine four acres of real property located at the northwest and southwest corner of the intersection of East Road Four and a Half South and South Road One East from Commercial Light CL zoning district to CH Commercial Heavy zoning district in order to further develop the property. Will, good to see you.
Alrighty, hey, yeah, long time no see. Um, uh, commission, the item before you is a rezoning from commercial light to commercial heavy. The applicant's intention is to develop, um, at the very least, the southern part, portion, or excuse me, the southern property, the larger one, is an RV park. So just a little property description here. The properties are located at the intersection of East Road Four and a Half South and South Road One East to the north and southern edge here. Uh, to the northwest, you have the Windy Plaza, extra space, uh, self-storage and RV storage. Then to the house, south, you have Horses With Hearts. Uh, the properties itself, um, total, little, uh, close to twelve acres. However, the larger one is six point eight six acres and then the one to the north is five point oh eight acres. Uh, the existing zoning is commercial light and then general plan land use designation is commercial multifamily. So segueing into the general plan, uh, the general plan specifically calls this area out as commercial multifamily as well as the surrounding area. To the east of it, you have a future growth area designation which essentially incorporates anything under the sun. You can do anything from industrial to planned communities to commercial to multifamily out in that area. Um, but the request of commercial heavy is consistent with the general plan as it is designated as commercial. And then to the north as well as the south, you do have, um, community cores, uh, as indicated by the general plan for, uh, a multitude of retail, small community, uh, type developments with, um, large benefit to the town. In regards to zoning, uh, the surrounding zoning to the northeast and, or northwest and south is commercial light. Uh, to the east, you have state, and then you have some SR two to the west with a deep well ranch, um, marijuana, uh, medical marijuana facility to the north here and then, um, some SR one and AR five. The request of commercial heavy is consistent with the surrounding area, uh, as the primary area is a commercial designation. Neighborhood meeting was held on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. All property owners were noticed within a three hundred foot radius of the subject properties. One property owner was in attendance and they asked, um, what he was proposing for the properties and it is, uh, a proposed RV park on the southern portion, uh, or the southern property. And then it was asked if there was water and sewer in the area and unfortunately there is not. Um, I know the town would love to see water and sewer down there, however, the site is, um, anticipated to be utilizing well and septic. Uh, stipulations for the rezoning, these were presented to the applicant at the neighborhood meeting. In regards to right-of-way dedications, town code asks for right-of-way dedication on the East Road Four and a Half South, totaling sixty feet, thirty, thirty feet north and south of the section line. There already is an existing fifty-foot dedication total, so it would be an additional ten foot, or five foot either side. And then town code dict- or asks for fifty feet of dedication along South Road One East. Currently, the property has a fifty-foot, uh, public vehicular access easement to the rear. Um, we're just asking for that fifty-foot dedication to take place. Uh, and then as far as roadway improvements along Four and a Half South, uh, both sides where the property fronts on Four and a Half, it is required, um, these are half width improvements here, so it's fourteen feet minimum, uh, roadway without on-street parking, six-inch vertical curb and gutter, five-foot minimum concrete sidewalk, one side. And then on along South Road One East, half-width improvement, which is already there, um, the road is currently paved. Uh, so the half-width improvement will not be required. All that it will be required is a six-inch vertical curb and gutter and five-foot minimum concrete sidewalk. Staff is recommending that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the town council to rezone approximately eleven point nine four acres of real property from the Commercial Light zoning district to Commercial Heavy zoning district in order to develop the property with the following stipulations. The right-of-way dedication be made along East Road Four and a Half South and South Road One East and street improvements be made along East Road Four and a Half South and South Road One East. With that, I will open it up to questions or discussion from the commission.
Thank you. Anybody on the commission have questions for Mr. Dinji? Yes, sir.
I'm curious about the upscale, uh, portion of this, what does that?
I will let the applicant define, um, his in- intention for, um, how he defines that.
Was there any, were there any plans for how many spaces we used?
So, within commercial light, um, well, commercial heavy, you're allowed greater than twenty-six spaces. Commercial light with a conditional use permit, you're allowed up to twenty-six spaces. So his intention is to have more than, um, that, which is why he needs the commercial heavy zoning district.
So how many, you, how many RVs can he park in?
I am not one hundred percent sure on that, uh, the applicant is here.
That requirement is not a requirement of our code. Um, so rezoning to a hard zone, commercial heavy, which is not a planned area development, does not require a conceptual development plan.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Will.
No problem.
Um, is the developer here, would he like to come up and speak? Please state your name.
Can you need my address?
We just need for you to speak in the microphone with your name.
Can you hear me? Keith Hughes, yes. So, as Will stated, I'm looking to put an RV park in there. When I consider something upscale, I, I'm doing, um, more concrete areas, some fire pits, things that are nicer for the, for the RV users. And I'm hoping to put in somewhere between seventy-five and ninety units, which is a lot less than the property would allow. I, I do need, um, CH zoning to get above the twenty-six units. So that's, that's why I'm doing this.
Okay, any other questions that answered you?
Right, but even.
Yes, I was just concerned with the amount, the density of the RVs being parked there. You don't wanna lot, you know, in there, so. But you've addressed that, I think.
Right, it's lower density than I can probably put in there, but I, I wanna give plenty of room for the RVs in an area to sit next to your RV and have a nice little concrete area to have a patio type thing. You've seen, I'm sure you've seen some of the nicer RV parks that aren't just slammed in there, and that's what our goal is.
Okay.
Thank you, any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Will this allow park models too, besides RVs?
No, this is just RVs, just.
Just RVs.
Yes.
Temporary parking.
Yeah, you know, weekly, monthly type stuff.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna open up the public portion of the meeting for this item six D. Anybody out there in the public like to step up to the microphone and ask some questions? Please step up and state your name.
My name is Randy Daly. I live on Autumn Lane. Um, I'm concerned about this because of the water situation. Um, my whole street, pretty much on Autumn Lane, has had to put in new wells because of the mobile homes and homes that have been put on One East. One East is nothing but a drag strip. I mean, all times, day and night, the traffic is terrible. You know, we can't get our streets taken care of. Um, we've got the septic problem. Where's all this waste gonna go? Where's all this water gonna come from? Is what I would like to know.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Once again, Marty Hassett. Well, good evening. Gentlemen, ladies. I heard, I heard inference to possibly light industrial. Now, when I sat in that dais many years ago, we had a area like that on Four North by the old junkyard. The night I was sitting in that dais, it went up in flames because of dumped fuel, oil, et cetera. That was a designated industrial area. My understanding, across the street from the Methodist church on One South, where Mr. Curry landed his planes years ago, was an industrial area, designated industrial light. Do we need another industrial area in town? Number one. Number two.
Let him, let him finish.
Number two, we have wells that are going south. I just put one in myself a year and a half ago. Y'all know what they cost. The traffic is horrific on One East at all hours of the day and night. Since it's asphalted, you can just go down and count the number of patches laid by the youngsters on the tires. So I don't think this is a good situation for that part of town. The ads put away back off the highway. I surmised when the road was put in to get the traffic off the highway in case another dump or drop turned over in a roundabout. That's understandable. But to put in something like this, where they gonna get the water? We're the last people in the world who're gonna get any kind of sewer and water treatment from the town of Chino Valley because there's not enough money back there to afford it. For fifteen people, twenty people max back in there, east of One East, never gonna get anything back there in ways, any kind of sewer, water. Not that I would want it. But it's, it's a real, it's a real question that I have to ask the Planning and Zoning Commission for the simple fact of what it's gonna produce. I'm not, not against growth, I never was before. But you can put controlled growth, like I said many years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll answer all of them when we get a chance to come back around. All right, is there anybody else out there would like to speak? Uh, sir, you already came up and spoke once. We'll give you another shot.
Is it, is it okay to speak twice?
What's that?
I said, is it okay to speak twice?
It is, 'cause I'm letting you do that, yes.
Hello, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, um, yeah, my, my concern is, uh, is about water too. Um, Prescott has got, uh, a big, uh, well down there on, uh, uh, One Road north, I think it is, uh, runs parallel to eighty-nine. And, uh, and then, I don't know how many spaces we're talking about here for, uh, um, mobile, no, I mean for, uh, RVs. But, um, yeah, we, uh, live at the end of, um, um, Autumn Lane. And, uh, we were, uh, thinking we might have to, uh, uh, redo our well too. And, uh, that's fifteen thousand bucks worth. I don't know if you knew that.
Yeah, you had mentioned when on your first visit up here that you were concerned about water and, and the price of wells.
Yeah, right on, okay, well, uh, this, um, new development here uh, is gonna take an awful lot of water, 'cause they're gonna have not just, uh, people, um, taking the water for, uh, you know, RVs, but I mean, they're gonna have, uh, irrigation and, uh, and so on. I don't know what kind of, uh, amenities they have in there. Um, but, um, I think they're gonna be just, uh, taking too much water. And, uh, I think there's other, um, RV, uh, places in town. I wonder why they couldn't develop, uh, over in that area maybe, you know, instead of down here. I know there's, there's plenty of room as far as that goes, but, um, uh, I don't think that designation of heavy commercial is fair, uh, for the residents. And as far as letting people know, within three hundred feet of this development, for crying out loud, there's only about five or six maybe buildings that, uh, would get the notice. And the rest of us who have houses, they're just another quarter mile away, got nothing. You know, so, uh, I don't think that was fair, uh, for the residents of the area. You know, okay, sure, now you let everybody know within three hundred feet because that's a designation. But, uh, who all gets the notice? You know, just a very few people.
Sir, please address your comments up to the board here, please, thank you.
Oh, I thought he was part of the board.
He's not.
Oh, I'm new here, I didn't know. So, anyway, um, yeah, that's, that's what I got to say there. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Anybody else in the public like to speak? Anybody else in the public like to speak? All right, uh, yes, sir. Please step up and state your name.
My name's Stan Skira, I own the property adjacent to this development that he wants to do over here and I'm all for it. I don't think it'd use a lot of water. Besides, we were promised water when we were annexed into Chino and I'm still waiting for it. And again, I gave up a half acre of my property to put four and a half in there. So you can see I want to do something. But I did hear something earlier about putting curbing in. He has to require, he's required to put curbing in around his property and a sidewalk?
That's part of the town.
That doesn't even make sense, so I've got six hundred plus feet of sidewalk to put in one, if I want to develop that piece at, at my expense. It just, it doesn't make sense, I guess, is what I'm saying. And his water concern, you just approved the subdivision, you know, and they're going to use a lot more water than he is. So basically, that's all I have to say, I, I think it's just all of the context.
So I would suggest that you contact the town staff and they can give you all the ins and outs about if you did decide to develop your property, whether the curb and gutter stuff would be required for you.
Well, yeah, but right now I'm looking at it saying, I guess I'm not going to develop it if I have to put in all that sidewalk and everything else, for what? Who's going to walk down that sidewalk? Nobody. It's going to be like Prescott Valley where they got sidewalks from one end to the other and you never see anybody walking on it. It's just in that expense, it doesn't make sense. The money could be used elsewhere. But again, I'm still waiting for the water from Chino Valley they promised me, you know? And plus, I think I got ten acres, or ten dollars for that half acre that you guys took for that road. But I'm not a fool either because it's commercial, now it gives me more road frontage. So that's why, you know. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sir, sir?
Yep.
Can you please repeat your last name?
Skira, S-K-U-R-A.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Anybody out there would like to speak from the public for this item? All right. Seeing as hell, nobody else is stepping up, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting. We have several questions that were asked, a lot of them to do with water. Also, um, heavy industrial, which was not the designation mentioned, maybe you could clarify some of that for us?
Sure. Um, with regard to the well and the water, uh, I, maybe Frank could address that. Uh, the difference between commercial light and commercial heavy is typically the list of uses that are entitled for those properties. Uh, commercial heavy does allow for light manufacturing. Um, and we actually define light manufacturing, it does not allow for industrial of any kind. But light manufacturing is, is defined by our code and it says "The fabrication and assembly of finished products or sub-assemblies thereof so long as the primary use of the property is not the basic processing or compounding of raw materials or food products." So any, any taking of raw materials and combining it into a, a new process, that's considered industrial. Manufacturing, that would not be allowed. Uh, it would be the combining of kits or, uh, assemblies of already finished products into other products. That's the extent of the manufacturing that would be allowed in commercial heavy. Um, again, the major differences between commercial light and commercial heavy are the list of uses.
Okay, and maybe you could comment on the water situation or Will, um.
Um.
Right? I'm sorry, too many things happening at once. Would you like to come up? Frank Marbury and let us know about the water.
Yeah, you might as well be a target. Okay, Frank Marbury, town engineer. Um, I'll address the, the issue of the town does not have any town water or sewer anywhere near the area. So it's not available from the town. I'd like to put Will on the spot once again if I could. From your memory, Will, with the agreement with Prescott, is this further south than the limits of that agreement?
Uh, from my memory, it is encompassed in that, um, intergovernmental agreement.
So it is within the area, so there is a possibility this property, there is a existing agreement between City of Prescott and Town of Chino Valley where the City of Prescott, uh, can serve commercial properties along the Highway eighty-nine corridor. So this being a commercial property along the Highway eighty-nine corridor is a good chance that maybe City of Prescott could serve this property. The exact details are up to the City of Prescott to approve the use. But there is an agreement that they will, uh, with a few conditions stated in that agreement, uh, attempt to serve commercial properties in the town. So that's, that may be a benefit there that is an option for the developer. There's also the option to drill a well. As far as drilling wells go with the water, that is a, a state matter of regulation. So Arizona Division of Water Resources would regulate that. And that would be, uh, they would have to bring some, some water rights to, to the state to get a well bigger than thirty gallons a minute, which is an exempt well. So, uh, we kind of, uh, just leave that between the developer and the state to regulate. Now, the town doesn't regulate individual wells per se. Uh, as far as sewer goes, there's also no sewer in the area, so that would be um, some sort of onsite disposal system, some form of a septic system or some people call them packaged plants depending on the size. That would, uh, a package plant, the town does mention in code that it discourages those but allows them in cases where the sewer is not available, so that would be a combination of the town and also the county. The county approves all of the septic systems through a delegation agreement with Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. So that's where the county comes into it, approving any of the septic systems, uh, through county environmental services. Environmental Health and Development Services, I think, is where that is. Suzanne. Um, so again, we just make sure that the county and the state are satisfied when it's not town water or sewer approving those and, and then the town will look at the drainage. Any drainage concerns when it comes to site plan review, uh, to make sure those are taken care of through the engineering process? It's not entitlement thing, but that's kind of how the process works.
And so all of that stuff would be addressed later down the road, not part of the zoning changes we're talking about here tonight.
Can you repeat that one more time?
In other words, this, the stuff with the state, the water issues with the state and also the county being approving of the septic system and stuff, that's things that happen farther down the road.
That would all be taken care of during site plan review? Uh, when they submit, uh, for site plan, landscape plan, lighting plan, and then they submit their construction and grading and drainage plans as well.
And that's not really part of what we're talking about here.
It's not part of, so tonight's discussion is, should this property be given the entitlements of commercial heavy or should it not?
Correct.
Uh, staff's position is, it's consistent with the general plan and the surrounding area, we are recommending approval.
All right. Any other questions?
And just one more point of clarification, at, at least for residential, um, when you apply for a building permit, you don't even need water, you could haul water. You just need a discharge authorization for septic or sewer. So, so there's that too.
Thank you for educating us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, so is there any discussion, any questions, anybody we need to speak to again? Yes, sir.
So there wouldn't be any permanent residents there on the, on the property, right? It's just RVs moving in and out, is that right?
That's my plan, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? So I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. Recommend Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Town Council to rezone approximately eleven point nine four acres of real property from Commercial Light CL Zoning District to CH Commercial Heavy Zoning District in order to develop the property with the stipulations as presented in the staff report.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
All seconded.
We have two seconds. So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion before we vote? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Welker?
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Switzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Meders?
Aye.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Aye.
Chair Merritt?
Yes. So the motion is carried. All right, so we're going to move forward to item seven. Non-public hearing action items, do we have any of those?
There are none tonight.
All right, thank you. Item eight, discussion items.
Likewise, there are none.
Okay. So item nine is an opportunity for public comment. For any item that is not on the agenda of this meeting, public is encouraged to speak. You have three minutes, would anybody be interested? Seeing none, we're going to close that portion of the meeting. Like to move forward with item ten, a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, adjourn?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You didn't want a roll call vote?
No. I don't care what anybody else thinks.